And welcome to the Twinsburg Board of Education regular meeting of Wednesday, June 6, 2018. Call the meeting to order at 7:02. Mr. Aho would please call the roll.
Mr. Solora?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mr. Curtis is absent.
If you could all join with me in standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
No change to the agenda.
Did you want to break out?
I'll break out. Let me just go break out. If you don't want me to get changed. Again, good evening and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Normally, my colleagues tend to think that I ramble on from my board president's report. But so seeing as how this is the first meeting in the summertime, school's out, and there's a very important game tonight, and we have a ton of students here to recognize, I will try and keep this as fast as you guys were on Saturday. So, just a quick reminder, even though school's out, students are enjoying some time off this summer, the district still is busy. We've got a ton of our summer projects that Mr. Welker has worked long and hard all winter and spring long in securing contracts, so you'll start seeing a ton of activity going around as we get our schools cleaned up, some large construction projects finished and everything ready for schools to start again in August. So, that's pretty much all I have. I'll turn it over to you, Superintendent Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Solora. Good evening, Board members. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. You know, we thought once the students commenced on May 22nd, we were done celebrating, at least for a minute, but they're faster than a minute. So, we have a lot of students to celebrate this evening, and their parents are here and our coaching staff from Twinsburg High School's track and field team. So, we're going to get to that in a minute. Board of Education, there are a couple of things I just wanted to remind everyone and some new information for the community as well. As you know, our senior class of 2018 commenced on May 22nd, and we're so proud of the 321 students who are now graduates of Twinsburg High School. We've been working on the numbers. The students actually earned just about $8 million in scholarships. That's a significant amount of money, and truly, that just tells you about the caliber of student that attends the high school across the street here. Every year, we do a newsletter called the Senior Send-Off, and just finishing up, editing, making sure everybody's name is spelled right and such, and so that will come out probably within the next two weeks. It'll be an insert in the Twinsburg Bulletin, and all of the seniors, the graduates, will receive a copy of that in the US Mail. So, just a way to celebrate, May 22nd, a little memorial document for the students to keep in their scrapbooks and their parents, too. So, those will be coming home shortly for the graduates and in the bulletin for everybody else. Also, don't forget, summertime is a great time to pick up a great book and read, and we do have our summer reading list. Thank you, Mrs. Harvin. It's posted on the website for students in grades 1 through 12. Just go to the district website if you're not sure of the assignment for the summer, click on District Departments, find the Curriculum Department, click on that, and download the Summer Reading List. And, you know, there always seems to be so much time in the summer vacation, but before you know it, it's July, and then it's August, then it's back to school. So, don't wait too long to start that great book, and you'll have it done, and you'll feel happy that you did that in the month of June. So, something to think about. Board of Education, as you know, we're very fortunate to have a partnership with Cable 9, and this time of the year, what has been done is that we have three students from Twinsburg High School, Jason Ahearn, John Sidlowski, and Lily Horvath, who put together a really nice update summary of the year that has been for the Twinsburg City School District. So, we just finished recording the Principal's Messages on Friday and My Message, and it's now in the edit stage, and it will soon be on Cable 9. It replaces some of the Twinsburg Schools Today shows that are on that station, and I think you can be really pleased. So, we thank Jason and John and Lily, and by the way, we congratulate Lily because she's off to college in California pursuing a degree in film. So, she's going to go ahead and do something great with the great talent that she has. Board of Education, some exciting news for you. This week, we learned that we secured a number of grants from the Summit County ADM Board. So, these grants will be used to continue the work that we are doing in prevention education, and so I will have more information. And actually, we're asking our friends from Beachburg to do a presentation to you in the month of July, so they will provide an update as to what has happened with the grant money that we already secured and some plans moving forward for grant money for next school Board of Education, just a new thing that we're going to do here in the district. You know, we usually have new student registration in the month of August, and we usually run it a couple of days from 8:00 in the morning till 8:00 in the evening. And the problem with that is parents that are new to our community really want to get that done, and they want to know that their student is registered for school, and we want to know that the kids are coming early so we can plan and make sure we have enough books and such. And so, beginning the last two weeks in June, and then the second, third, and fourth week in July, on Tuesdays and Thursdays in the morning from 7:00 to 10:30, we're going to be holding new student registration throughout the month of June and into July. And parents who are interested in registering new students for school can go on the district website, click on the "For Parents" tab, scroll down to Registration Information, and kindly make an appointment, whatever works in your schedule. We're hoping to get the majority of our new parents registered here in the summer months, and then there won't be such a rush come the month of August. And if you have any questions, feel free to give the Board Office a call, or until the end of the month, the high school district registrar works, I think, until June 20th or so. So, you can find more information about this on our district website. So, Board of Education, there's so many things that are still going on. As you mentioned, Mr. Solora, projects are underway, lots of building projects, lots of curriculum planning for next school year. But before we get into all of what has to be for next year, we still have some big news to celebrate for this school year, the 1718 school year. And so, Mr. Fantone and Mrs. Turingo and I traveled to Columbus on Saturday. Actually, Mr. Fantone was there also on Friday for the semifinals, and we were just so excited to watch our students here participate in the OHSA State Championship Meet at Jesse Owens Stadium. You know, we've had success with the track and field team over the years, and this just continues to grow and grow. We have such enthusiasm, such dedication, and the thing I noticed about the team this year is the dedication to each other, the teamwork. I happened to be watching ET Easter when he was doing the high jump, and I was along the fence, and I watched our Lady Tigers come around the track just as he was about ready to jump. And you guys, you gave him such encouragement just by your presence. I saw that happen. So, that's the kind of stuff these students are made of. They support each other, and it's the teamwork that really matters. But beyond the teamwork, we have so much to celebrate this evening, so I'm going to ask Mr. Fantone to come forward. And Board of Education, I know you have certificates for our student athletes, so if you would kindly come forward, too. We have a lot of great students to celebrate, but before we get to that, we want to celebrate our coaches first and foremost.
Thank you very much for everybody coming out tonight. As Mrs. Powers said, what an awesome weekend in Columbus it was. It truly was. It was a pleasure. It was an honor to be in that stadium this weekend and see the success that so many of our student athletes had, sending 10 total students to Columbus. Can't give enough credit to the eight coaches that we have that work with these kids every single day. And I made the point at the Spring Sports Banquet last week, especially with the track athletes this year, what they went through dealing with the northeast Ohio springtime weather. Oh, I mean, we moved more track meets and canceled and postponed probably than has happened in the past 10 years, and it's a testament to how hard they work, their consistency every day, the coaches and the hard work that they put in, and again, all around, just an outstanding, outstanding track season that culminated in Columbus this past weekend. Before we recognize our athletes, I'd just like to recognize our eight coaches who just go above and beyond every single day for our kids and put in that time and effort and energy, and we truly appreciate you, so if you could come on up as we call your name. The first coach that we are going to recognize tonight is Sarah Komet. Our next coach that we'd like to honor tonight, unable to join us, Gus Critchlow. Our pole vaulting expert of the group that we'd like to recognize tonight, Mr. Roger The high jump expert of the group, Mr. Chuck Glover. New to our coaching staff this year, but somebody who just came in and did a phenomenal job with our sprint athletes, Mr. Derek McKinley. Our head throwing coach, Mr. Anthony Byrd. Our long jump expert who is unable to be here tonight, Miss Danae Pinkney. And I'm going to hold off on our last coach, and when she comes in, we'll recognize her because I heard through the grapevine, she's on her way here any second. But moving right along into the athletes that we had that were down in Columbus this past weekend, starting with Ryan Atkins. Ryan was a state qualifier in the 1600 meter run, and for those of you who aren't track people, that's the one-mile race. Ryan took third place at districts and was also the third-place finisher at the regional meet in Austintown right before Memorial Day. Ryan Atkins. Our next athlete that we'd like to recognize tonight, pole vaulter Brad Yates. Brad was a state qualifier in the pole vault, also taking second place at the district meet, finishing in fourth place at the regional meet, and something that I thought was just a really neat thing about Brad this year, this is the second time we've had him in a board meeting. He is a state qualifier not only in track and field, but also in the sport of diving. So, two different sports here. Brad Yates, congratulations. Our next athlete we'd like to recognize tonight is Julia Henderson. Julia was our alternate racer in both the 4x400-meter dash and the 4x100-meter dash, and we truly appreciate everything that Julia gave to the track team this year, being ready to run at any given moment. Julia Henderson. The next athlete we'd like to recognize tonight, unable to be here, but just truly a phenomenal season, Atashin ET Easter. Atashin was a state qualifier in both the long jump and the high jump. He finished seventh in the state of Ohio in long jump, finished third in the state of Ohio in high jump, and I will say that on Saturday, when we were standing there watching the high jump, Mrs. Powers and I were up against the fence, just an unbelievable final three kids that were in that high jump, and Atashin just gave it his all. He was, I made the comment to him down in Columbus on Saturday, that last year, he missed going to states by one spot, and he looked at me that night at Austintown, and he said, "I'm going to get to Columbus next year," and there he is in third place on the podium in the state of Ohio in Division 1. Atashin was also the district champion in both long jump and high jump. He was third-place regional finisher in the long jump. He was the suburban league champion in both the high jump and the long jump, and he was the regional champion in the high jump. Atashin Easter, third place in the state of Ohio. The next athlete that we'd like to call up and recognize, Nia Bussey. Just as we did at the Spring Sports Banquet, Nia and a few of the other sprinters that we're going to honor here tonight, they're going to have their names called multiple times, but Nia, who qualified and finished fourth in the state of Ohio in the 100-meter dash, Nia was the suburban league champion in the 100-meter dash, she was the district champion in the 100-meter dash, and she finished in third place at regionals, finishing fourth in the state of Ohio in Division 1 in the 100-meter dash, Nia Bussey. Our next track athlete, Nia Robinson. Nia was a state qualifier in the 400-meter dash, where she finished third in the state of Ohio in the 400-meter. Nia is also now our school record holder in the 400-meter dash. Nia was the suburban league champion in the 400-meter dash, she was the runner-up at districts, and she was the runner-up at regionals. Nia Robinson. Before I go any further, I'd like to recognize our other coach who just walked into the room, The next group of athletes that we'd like to recognize tonight is our 4x100-meter relay team of Nia Bussey, Brianna McDonald, Kumari Griffin, and Alyssa Willis. The 4x100-meter relay team, state qualifiers, finished in seventh place in the state of Ohio in Division 1 for this year. They were suburban league champions in the 4x100-meter relay, district champions, and were regional runner-ups, finishing seventh in the entire state of Ohio in Division 1. Our 4x100-meter relay team. The next athlete that we'd like to recognize tonight is already standing up here in the 200-meter dash, Nia Bussey. Everybody up here feels like I do at a banquet, because we keep calling those same names over and over and over, and they shake hands. Nia took sixth place in the state of Ohio in the 200-meter dash. She was the runner-up at the district meet and finished in fifth place at the regional meet, finishing sixth in the state in Division 1 in the 200-meter dash, Nia Bussey. The next group that we'd like to honor tonight is our 4x400-meter relay team of Nia Bussey, Kumari Griffin, Mariah Miles, and Nia Robinson. This group finished in fourth place in the entire state of Ohio in Division 1. They were the suburban league champions in the 4x400-meter dash, district champions, and regional runner-up. They are also the school record holders in the 4x400-meter dash. Nia Bussey, Kumari Griffin, Mariah Miles, and Nia Robinson. Highlight of the day Saturday, no doubt for me, was standing on the fence right as Nia came around on the last leg of the 4x200. It was unbelievable to watch. Our 4x200-meter relay state champion team of Mariah Miles, Kumari Griffin, Nia Robinson, This group won a state championship in the 4x200-meter dash by over two seconds, which is absolutely unbelievable in track, to win a relay race by over two seconds. This 4x200-meter relay team, which is also now our school record-holding relay team, were suburban league champions, district champions, regional champions, and in the entire state of Ohio in Division 1, state champions. And I'll always remember this, standing with Mrs. Powers on the fence right there, I said to her, I said, "If Kumari and Nia have a clean exchange here, it's over." And as soon as Nia got that exchange, she was gone, and it was just a really, really neat thing to watch. And again, to win that relay by over two seconds, testament to them, the coaching staff who worked with them all year, just an awesome, awesome experience and accomplishment for these young ladies up here. So, congratulations on your state championship. Last, but certainly not least, just what a great accomplishment this was as well for our girls' track team to be in Columbus and as a team to finish tied for second place overall in the state of Ohio as a team, finishing with 31 points at the state meet. Our entire girls' track team, who are runners-up in suburban league, district champions, and regional champions, congratulations to the entire Twinsburg High School girls' track Yeah, I just want to make sure I didn't forget something here. Nia, we talked about the 400, correct? Yeah, okay. I was hoping I didn't forget something. Thank you. Again, for the entire group that is standing up here right now, and for those who couldn't be here tonight, what an awesome accomplishment for everybody. Again, truly an honor and a pleasure to stand out there and watch the success that these kids had and the coaches had, and all that hard work that has paid off for many of them for longer than they've been in high school. The long hours, the practices, it just, it all came to fruition, and just an awesome, awesome experience for everybody involved. Congratulations, can't say it enough.
Mr. Fantone, I think Mr. Solora would like to say a few words of congratulations.
I was, we were all getting text updates and Twitter updates on Saturday from Superintendent Powers, from Mr. Fantone, and, you know, I sat there and I watched him, and she got all the pictures, and, you know, I was just kind of adding up in my head and thinking of all the great finishes, you know, especially the girls' ladies had, and I said, "You know what? We've got to be somewhere up close," and she said that we were second in the state. That was just a tremendous accomplishment. You know, it's amazing the amount of effort that you guys have put through all spring going down there, and, you know, what makes me most proud as a board member, as a parent of, you know, a few athletes, is the fact that, and Mr. Fantone hinted that, you guys were all there as a team, and track is a lot of individual events, but you guys were all there cheering for everybody, you had everybody's back, and that's the most important thing. That's what makes us proud, that's what makes us a community, and that's what makes us Tigers. So, thank you very much for all your effort, and congratulations again.
If I could ask Mr. Gatauski, who has the nice camera, if you could take a nice photo of everyone, and I think we probably have to be, let the Lady Tigers go in the front and the guys behind, and the coaches maybe on the side of the board. This is a great memory for the students and of course for our school district and our And before we do that, Mrs. Turingo, you can't be hiding in the back room. You have to come forward, too.
Yes.
Coach that just walked in, we recognize one of our new sprint coaches here, Mr. Derek McKinley.
I was working, I couldn't, my phone was walking out, and I was like, messages like later.
Trying to figure out where I was. Was Saturday, right?
Mm-hmm. It's hard to follow that. That completes my report.
Is that all that you have? Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Moving on to E3 committee reports. Any, anything to?
I'm just at the Policy Committee met this morning, and we'll have more updates later on the future board meeting.
Okay. Moving on to administrative reports. Mr. Aho, you've got a five-year forecast update for us?
Yeah, this is the update of the five-year forecast. This is the May update. In October, we do the big redo and add the next year to it. This is basically the one from October, and we just kind of update it with some current information. That's part of the requirement from the ODE and the Auditor's Office is to update these in May. There, there it goes. Got it. This is the five-year forecast page on the ODE's website. You can see, you know, this is kind of how you go to access the forecasts. All the school districts' forecasts are up there. The arrow over there is pointing to, you know, on this webpage on ODE, they basically tell, you know, the background on how to read a five-year forecast, what's the intent, you know, why are they put together, and it gives you some of that information. You know, these five-year forecasts aren't like what you'd see in a business where, you know, somebody has to go out and make so many sales, and they've got to cover those revenues and expenditures and all that stuff. This is, you know, really, the purpose of these five-year forecasts in the public realm is really just to keep on track with your expenditures and your revenues, so you know what's going on, so that all the stakeholders can see a document that has all this in. It's good for conversation, it's good for planning, so it's important to do the document, but, you know, it does have a different purpose than, you know, like a large corporate five-year forecast would have. Of course, most five-year, most corporations don't go on five years anyway, so. And there's a link there to access the spreadsheets, and then down below is the one for the notes and the assumptions. That basically tells the story behind each five-year forecast. So, each school district basically has a spreadsheet, and then they have assumptions that kind of walk the reader through the different aspects of the forecast. You know, I touched on earlier, you know, ODE's forecast purpose and objectives is to engage in planning and discussion, and basically, it provides a method for the ODE and the state auditors to identify schools with, you know, potential financial problems. If you're looking at, you know, some deficits, big deficits coming up in the, you know, next couple of years, ODE will step in, they'll ask you what you're doing about it. You know, then, you know, worst-case scenario, if nothing happens, they basically come in and start running your district for you. Another part of this forecast is basically a 412 certificate, and what that means is basically that you're signing a document that says that you have the dollars in the next year or so to operate the district. And a lot of this purpose is so everybody's on board, they know what the financial status of the district is or public entity, and, you know, at the end of the day, if, you know, some of these entities would run out of money, and then people just can't, you know, throw their hands up in the air and say they didn't know, because that's what the purpose of this is, is informational. Something we've been dealing with in Twinsburg, the school district, you know, revenue Something we've been dealing with in Twinsburg, the school district, you know, revenues have been flat for 10 years from 2007 to 2017 and it's a pretty flat line there. You know, we passed a levy in November 2012 and it's still pretty flat, only an increase of $288,000. And a lot of this is because of the legislation that's happened down in Columbus, House Bill 920, which caps the, there's no inflationary increases on property taxes. So if a house value were to double in value, they're going to pay the same taxes on those levies that were passed in, you know, prior. House Bill 66 is another thing that affects that line. That's the elimination of the cat tax, tangible personal property tax. And then state funding, they keep coming out with different models of state funding and each time they do that, they either put the district on a cap or a guarantee. Guarantee means like a district won't get less money and a cap means you won't get more money. So basically, they kind of just freeze everybody where it's at and the school funding formula really isn't a formula, it's just an old number that they came up with years ago. This is one of the things to kind of illustrate, this was the total of tangible personal property plus some of the cat tax reimbursements. In the base year 2004, the tangible personal property tax collected was like $9.8 million. Over time, you know, it increased a little bit and then they started putting in some cat tax money and that's what that $13 million is up there. That one bump in the middle is where Chrysler went out of business and paid their back taxes. You know, but that line's steadily going down and then, you know, this year we'll get about $3.8 million. That's a difference of $6 million from the base year of 2004, that $9.8 million, you know, $3.8, $3.8 million and $6 million that we're not collecting. And that's every year that, you know, that keeps getting reduced. So it's not just a one-time $6 million loss, it's, you know, $6 million, you know, plus going forward. This is also part of the state funding formula, you can see this on the ODE website. They do the calculation on the right side. And what's with that is they do their calculations and the school district is scheduled to receive from the state $5.7 million. But what really, before the caps and all that are added on there, the school district would have received $9.7 million. So we're capped at, that cap has reduced our revenues from the state by $3.9 million. So that's another issue that we have to deal with, you know, it is what it is, but that's just something people to, you know, to be aware of. You know, one of the things with the school district, we are a service industry. We will hire teachers and bus drivers and cooks and janitors and, you know, lots of people to take care of our students. You know, so it's 85% of what we spend is on, you know, teachers and staff, you know, there's salaries and benefits. You know, so a lot of the, you know, we have a high percentage of our dollars, you know, go into our classroom instruction. This is a five-year forecast, so earlier I showed you on the ODE website where you can find the forecasts. This is the one for Twinsburg. You know, something to note there is last year, you know, our expenditures exceeded revenues. This year should be kind of break even and then moving forward, there's going to be some red numbers that we need to deal with where expenditures are exceeding revenues. One of the things on here also is, on the October forecast, there were some numbers in here and that was basically the renewal levy. So at this point, the renewal levy is passed and we appreciate the support of the community for that. So that number's moved from there up, back up to the real estate line item. So that number's changing. So if someone was to look at it and you didn't notice, you know, why that number at the top went up, well, it's because of the levy passed. What the ODE has districts doing is when you have a levy that's kind of up for renewal, you put it down the bottom just to kind of show that that's a levy that's in the process of being renewed. So next October, when we go for the next renewal, we'll have to put that down on the bottom and then, you know, remove it from the top number. You know, over time, we've been, you know, I think we've been pretty cognizant of how the budgets are looking. Back around '12, '13, we did the operational change plan. That cut about $2.6 million in salaries and benefits, put a levy on for 4.9 mils, and then made some other adjustments. It was about a $7 million nut, as it was called at that time. And then also too, just recently, the board voters, were put on for voters to pass a 6.9 mil operating levy. Basically, all this stuff is just kind of, you know, helping us keep up with the changing cat tax reductions and inflation, those kind of things. You know, one of the things that, you know, that the board's already always been very aware of is being fiscally responsible. One of the things that is a good measure, is measured by the ODE, is the per-people expenditures. For Twinsburg, it's 10,000, 933, and that's on the fiscal year 17 cover report and that's an ODE document. Here's some similar and neighboring districts, which you can see are quite a bit higher than we are. And then Twinsburg is even lower than state average in similar districts. They compare, there's probably about 20 districts that the state likes to compare. Each district is kind of like, that's the number 20 that they pick out to compare you to. And we're doing, you know, several hundred dollars less in similar districts. You know, a lot of the reasons that we are watching our dollars is because of the state funding policy and how those dollars from the state are just hard to come by. The House Bill 920, again, no inflation on real estate tax collections and then, you know, of course, the House Bill 92020, or the House Bill 66 with the cap and tangible personal property. You know, other things we have to be aware of and then we're always concerned is, you know, the community supports the school district. So these are dollars, these are tax dollars, you know, that people, you know, vote on levies and they provide the district and that funds the education of the kids. So it's a real balancing act, you know, to keep that all in balance, you know, how much property tax, you know, and how much to pay employees and those kind of things. One of the things I was looking at the other day is always, somebody always says, well, how come out five years, you're in the red, you know? Why is, why is your forecast always in the red five years out and you're never in the red when it gets here? Well, because, you know, if you were to drive a car straight at a wall, you'd hit the wall. You don't want to do that, you turn the car, just like anything. So this is basically what would happen if we didn't do anything or, you know, in a couple of different scenarios. So this is the one, like, we have a bunch of support organizations, there's the Alliance and there's some of our other support organizations, OASBO and OSBA, House School Boards, and they're advocates and they've been out, you know, trying to influence, you know, lobby legislators for the cat tax and then trying to make it a permanent reimbursement. Well, it hasn't happened, but they've been able to kind of push that out a little bit. There were a couple of years where they froze the reimbursements and so, you know, we've been able to realize a few more dollars out of that, those dollars going away, that phase out. So this is the difference there. You can see on that one line that, right there, that's the difference between the original phase out. The original phase out said that in, in 2010, would start to phase out over seven years. So by 2017, that would, the cat tax dollars would all be phased out and they would phase it out by like 14 seventeens and then 11 seventeens, I don't know how they pick seventeens, but over that time, it kind of keeps going down by two or three, you know, of the seventeens. So if that was just to happen and they never changed the cat tax phase out, we would be red in 2020. And that's, everything else staying the same. So we take the five-year forecast that is as it is today and just say, you know, what happens if you change that phase out? Well, we'd be red in 2020. So what would happen if there were no levies put on the ballot and we just said, eh, we're not going to put any levies on the ballot? What would happen there? So again, we take the current five-year forecast and we back out the levies that have passed, been passed, and that's of course right there again, just to kind of highlight it a little bit. Well, it's red in 2019. So that's like next year. So if those levies hadn't have been passed, next year, the state would be, you know, up in Twinsburg, camped out at central office. And then next one, which is really kind of shocking to me, no operational change plan. So when Mrs. Powers got here, you know, we needed to do something, the board directed, you know, Mrs. Powers and the administration to come up with, you know, some way to kind of balance this budget and get it into shape. So at the time, the operational change plan was like about $2.6 million in reductions of staff. There was a levy that was put on, then there were some other adjustments that were made, like overtime and field trips and different things. So it wound up being about $7 million that was trimmed off the, you know, either added and trimmed to the budget. So what this thing is really interesting is right there in '17. So if we hadn't have done anything, the state would have taken us over in 2016. That's only in four years that would have happened. That's how fast it happens. So that's why we really have to stay on top of this stuff. You know, you can see there's one, two, three, four years right there. That fifth year, the state would have, you know, would have taken over the school district. So when people say like, well, you're always saying that, you know, your budget's going to go red. Well, if you don't do anything, yeah, it'll go red, but, you know, the board recognizes it, the administration recognizes it, superintendent recognizes it, and that's why we do things. And that's how, that's basically the, one of the main purposes of the five-year forecast. We have those conversations. We have those conversations and then we look, you know, to the future, what's going to happen if we, you know, drive our car straight into the wall? You know, we don't want to do that. So that's really a huge part of the purpose of the five-year forecast. You know, it kind of puts up the caution flag, you know, there's a winding road up ahead, you've got to be careful, you know, kind of if you come in, like the Garmin up there, if you come into some detours, it kind of takes you around and reroutes you. You know, this is kind of one of my favorite ones, I always put up there, is that Costa Concordia. You know, that guy didn't, he didn't pay attention. He didn't read his five-year forecast and, you know, or his voting charts and he rode up on the rocks right there. We don't want to be a school district riding up on the rocks like that cruise ship. This is one of the things over the next couple of years, we need to keep, you know, in our conversations. We have two more levies, these are two emergency levies, they've been on for quite a while. Those are renewed, they have like a 10-year cycle on them that they get renewed. They've kind of changed some of the rules on that. It was originally there every five years and then it went to 10 years last time. So that's one of the things that that can be renewed over a longer period of time. So we have those two coming up over the next couple of years. And then also too, the high school bond is basically going to be paid off pretty soon You know, that's basically a nutshell of the five-year forecast. And one of the things, you know, that just kind of came out recently too, was how, you know, US, I mean, Twinsburg Schools is recognized and the US News and World Report is one of the publications that recognizes our school district. You know, we're highly rated, number 46 out of 866 in Ohio high schools. And then we're also rated, you know, 1,152 out of the more than 22,000 high schools in the country. That's like top 5, 6% of schools. So that's, you know, we're doing a great job here. We're, you know, early with the dollars that we have and keeping an eye on the finances and the curriculum and all that stuff, we're able to kind of keep it all on track. And this is one of the other things, this is the strategic, the financial strategic planning flow chart. And that's something that we've kind of developed over the, several years ago and it's just been kind of guiding us, you know, as we move ahead over the next couple of years, you know, passing the levies, it kind of has the phase out of the tangible personal property taxes and then some of the other, you know, issues that the school district has to deal with. You know, and all this is all a part of the planning that keeps, you know, keeps us from running a ground like that Costa Concordia. That's it. So any questions or?
Maybe just a couple of comments. Of course, always thank you for putting that together. I think there's, there's always a lot of confusion out there and you do a good job recapping and, you know, most companies, even on Wall Street, you know, they don't do it five years out, they do it six months, three months, a year, and no one's knocking on their door when they're wrong. Couple of things always jump out at me, you know, the community is obviously, for us up here and the administration, Mrs. Powers, Mr. Walker, yourself, you know, we're in the weeds. You know, we're seeing these numbers, the planning flow chart's been around a number of years. So when these levies come up and cycle, it's not like they're being slipped in, they're planned for you. I'm glad you pointed out that there's two more renewals in the cycle and again, no new taxes. Those are very strategic parts of the budget. But the things that, you know, we hear two things that are kind of opposing now in the community and I'm just going to put it out there since you already mentioned is, is, you know, with a flat revenue of 43 million, pretty much over 10, I think it's longer now that you've been showing us. And we always hear about the surplus, the surplus, the surplus. And I had this conversation as recently as seven hours ago. And, you know, if you looked at doing absolutely nothing and trying to run a district for the year, the surplus is less than a year that will last. And the other thing that seems to be opposed to that, they always say, well, run it like a business. Well, that's what is happening when Mr. Aho reports that we're, we don't want to run the car into the wall. Nice analogy, by the way. You know, if we were to just do nothing and use the surplus, the state would be here, they'd be knocking on the door, they'd be camping out and they'd basically take over the district because that surplus would not last. And in your forecast, you're even forecasting that the surplus is continuing to go down. So try and operate like a business means you're not going to let that happen. So they aren't opposing each other, they're actually working together. The surplus and the ability to maintain for emergencies is just that. So I'm glad, I just wanted to highlight those couple of things and as always, I appreciate the history lesson taking us back to the operational change plan when you two were the only two. And the rest of us sitting up here were not part of that because that was much more work done by boards previous than us. But it all goes together and just like Ms. Davis mentioned, you know, policy. When we look at policy, and I sat on policy a number of years, you look back and say, well, what were they thinking in 1974 before we go and make a change? What is the impact? And that goes into policies and policies that have been around for a while and I want to thank you because it's the same with the financial. None of us know what's going to happen tomorrow, let alone a year, five years. And the reason the TPP is up and down is because they told us it was going to go away, so we planned for it. Well, then they reprieve and then maybe we have a little bit more money because it didn't go away that year, but we're going to take it next year, so we plan again. And then low and behold, you know, they finally, you know, screamed uncle and they took it away and it's going away and it's going away fast. And that was what the 6.9 mil levy, which was a permanent replacement of a permanent loss. So thank you for what you're doing and keeping us up to date and helping us educate those that are here tonight and those that are watching and reading about this every time we talk about it. Please spread the word. If you ever have questions, I know both administrators have open door policies and any board member here would be happy to discuss ideas as well. But, you know, it's an ongoing, very complicated, into the weeds, in a good way, approach. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Welcome.
Anything else? Mr. Aho, do you have any blue cards for remonstrance this evening?
No, I do not.
Move on to agenda items H. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read items H1 through 4. H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes. Regular meeting of May 16, 2018, as sent to the board under separate cover. H2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the following financial report for the month of April 2018. Bank reconciliation, general fund financial summary report, and financial report by fund as sent to the board under separate cover. H3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the check registers for the month of April 2018. Total including payroll is $4,520,648.20. And H4, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education, Summit County, Ohio, as statutory taxing authority for the Twinsburg Public Library, approves the Twinsburg Public Library alternative tax budget information and forward the tax budget to the Summit County Budget Commission. Have a motion for items H1 through 4. Mr. Felber, have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Davis, second. Discussion. Mr. Aho, would you just talk about H4, please?
Yeah, the library is a school type of library this way it was originally founded. So we're basically the kind of the statutory agent for the library. So this is all part of the process, the county. So this is all part of the process, the county, you know, for their budget commission. Library basically puts their budget together, passes it, and then we just kind of also agree with it and then send it down to the county.
And just to clarify, their budget is, are, we are two separate budgets, two separate entities, which is overseeing, you know, kind of what they're doing there. Any other discussion? We have items H1 through 4. Mr. Aho, please call roll.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes. Going to read item I1 by itself. Resolve that Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in a attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified, pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Have a motion to accept item I1.
So move.
Mr. Felber, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis, second. Any discussion? Mr. Aho, please call a roll.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Ipsy.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes. Item I1 passes 3-0 with one abstention. I2, resolve that Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified, pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Have a motion for item I2.
Summit.
Ms. Davis, I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Felber. Discussion? Mr. Aho, please call a roll.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes. I2 passes 4-0. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read items J1 through 10. J1, resolve that Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following items to be deleted from inventory list on the agenda. J2, resolve that Twinsburg Board of Education approves an extended school year student service agreement for one student to attend reeducation mentor during the summer of 2018 at a cost of $4,500. This is a general fund expense as sent to the board under separate cover. J3, resolve that Twinsburg Board of Education approves an agreement for one student to attend education alternatives in Ravenna, Ohio, June 4, 2018 through August 10, 2018 at a cost of $5,194. This is a general fund expense as sent to the board under separate cover. J4, resolve that Twinsburg Board of Education approves a change in the contract with PSI Affiliates Incorporated, PSI Associates, Inc., for the addition of nursing services to be provided during ESY extended school year, July 17 through 31st and August 1st and 2nd, 2018, for a total of 27 hours at a total cost of $741.96 as sent to the board under separate cover. J5, resolve that Twinsburg Board of Education approves an agreement for one student to attend reeducation in Bedford for 2018-2019 school year at a total cost of $49,868.274 a day for 182 days. This is a general fund expense as sent to the board under separate cover. J6, resolve that Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following list of books to be deleted from inventory upon recommendation of the superintendent. The list is in the agenda. J7, resolve that Twinsburg Board of Education approves the insurance rates for the 2018-2019 school year through the Ohio Schools Council in the amount of $142,073 as sent to the board under separate cover. J8, resolve that Twinsburg Board of Education approves a renewal three-year agreement with Facilities Management Express, 1515 Lakeshore Drive, Columbus, Ohio, 43204, for the use of an online facilities management and work order system for the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement as sent to the board under separate cover. J9, resolve that Twinsburg Board of Education approves the agreement with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio for a teacher of hearing impaired for up to nine hours at a rate of $84.88 per hour as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. And item J10, resolve that Twinsburg Board of Education approves the rental fee schedule for the 2018-2019 school year per the attached exhibit. Have a motion to accept items J1 through 10 as read.
So move.
Mr. Felber, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis, any discussion? Superintendent, any?
I think it's important if you would allow Chad to talk a little bit about the insurance rates.
Yeah.
Because, you know, there's a lot that goes on. Marty was very eloquent in his comments this evening about the fact that, you know, we watch the store, we make sure that contracts are negotiated and negotiated well. And a lot of what Mr. Walker does is making sure that our vendors are true to the district. And I'll tell you, I never want to negotiate against Mr. Walker. I will lose every time. But he's, again, once again this year, done a great job in taking a look at contracts for next year for vendors. And we're delighted that the work that he does really is impactful in a positive way to the bottom line here with our budget. So you can just talk through the insurance rates and, you know, the good news about the bottom line here.
Sure, sure. So with our insurance rates, we actually had a decent sized claim this year as well with the, with the windstorm that occurred. But despite that, we were able to negotiate a 0.5% decrease in our insurance rates compared to last year. And compared to fiscal year '15, our insurance rates are 1.75% lower. So we've really maintained and actually decreased our insurance coverage while maintaining the same level, so as far as our premium, so for commercial insurance, so. And then the, the other item that's on here, the online facilities management work order system, we really do pay attention to bidding out these, these types of services. The next competitor, without naming the competitor, has a contract that's $12,000 per year more, which are, and we've been able to maintain that cost over a, this would be our fourth year at only $3,000 a year. So we definitely are paying attention to even our support software and making sure that we're, we're receiving significant savings on that.
I imagine it'd probably be incalculable, the number of hours saved with the system like FMX because, you know, when we were more manual in multiple locations, that labor cost alone, you know, is probably tremendous.
Well, thank you. Definitely appreciate the hard work. Any other discussion?
Mr. Solara, I don't know if you want me to explain the change on item 10?
Yeah.
Relative to the rental fee schedule for next year.
Yeah.
So Board of Education, as you know, annual, you approve all of the fees. The student fees were approved in the month of May. And just recently, you had a work session and we took a look at the rental fee schedule. And one of the things that we've been watching and something that has sort of sat funny for Chad and I was the rental fees that our support organizations were being charged. And these are the organizations that do great things for our kids. The vocal music boosters, our PTAs, TAB, orchestra boosters, athletic boosters. And so what I propose on, on the rental fee schedule that you'll see in your packet this evening is for our district support organizations, those are the ones that the Board of Education formally recognizes in the fall of each year. So the ones I just mentioned, including PTA council and the five building PTA organizations, upon the approval of the Board of Education's recognition annually, so there are some tasks that those organizations need to, to complete. They have to audit their books. They have to provide documentation to Mr. Aho and me that they are, you know, running the organization appropriately as determined by the Attorney General because they're 501(c)(3) organization. So they present information to us. They usually do that through the summer months as their executive boards change. They do the audit of their books. They submit that information. And when we have all of that information from all of the organizations, we bring them forward to you to approve. So what I'm recommending this evening on the rental fee schedule is for those organizations, so that would be our five unit PTAs, the district council PTA, athletic boosters, vocal music boosters, orchestra boosters, and who did I forget?
Band boosters.
Band boosters, oh my goodness. How could I forget them? So for those four boost organizations plus the six PTA units, upon your formal recognition every year, they would not be charged for the rental fees nor would they be charged for labor costs associated with using the facilities on events that are scheduled Monday through Saturday. If they choose to hold an event on the Sunday, and that's quite rare that they do that, it is very expensive to bring in labor because of negotiated contracts. So then they would be considered Class A on the schedule. So we certainly do appreciate all that the support organizations do. We couldn't do what we do for students. You saw this evening, you know, athletic boosters are strong behind all of our athletic programs and every one of our support groups support our kids and give back to our students through so many programs. It only makes sense, in my opinion, and I hope that you think so as well, that we make this adjustment on the rental fee schedules as a way of recognizing all the good things that they do for, for the kids that attend our school district. And they support our staff in many, many ways as well.
And I think maybe just isn't it, Mrs. Powers, it's worthy of note that what we're asking these organizations to do is nothing new. They've always had us as nonprofits, submit their 990s and such. So we're not asking them to do anything other than what they've always done and had to legally do to be recognized by the district. But it is important that they do that because if they don't and they're not recognized, well, then they will not be able to take advantage of this change in the rental fee schedule.
Right. There is a statement on the bottom of the proposed schedule that says that. Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Felber. And part of it is, it's really important that the board recognizes them. And so we're asking the organizations, and I will meet with them here in June, the leadership of the groups, to just say, please get your things in. Marty and I make sure everything's together and then those come forward on the agenda so that you can formally recognize them. And, and through that effort, our thanks is, you know, we're able to waive those fees on their rentals from Monday through Saturday during the weekend on Saturday evening too.
And thank you. I know this was something that we had come through finance a few months ago when you had brought it up and I appreciate the effort that it took to kind of figure out, you know, the right thing to do. You know, we talk a lot about the right thing to do and, and, you know, when, when you have organizations that volunteer of their time and their knowledge and, you know, they raise a ton of money for our students and impact what our students are able to do above and beyond, you know, just a basic education and, and, you know, extracurricular experience, you know, that was, that was, that was the right thing to do. And it takes a while to figure out the best way to achieve that goal. And so I appreciate the effort. I look forward to, you know, being able to do this for those organizations that do so much for our students and our teachers and staff. You know, so I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that this helps make their, their planning and their budgets a little easier and allows them to, you know, continue to do the great things that they do.
And I just to confirm one thing I said, typically in Class A, they're not being charged for the rental fees. It's the labor costs.
Yes.
And that's really what is being waived. So I just wanted to confirm in my comments what was reality of it.
Just to reinforce what you already mentioned, which is, you know, we have negotiated contracts with, you know, our various unions and it's just that. I mean, we have to provide and have services available and those people in the building. That's a negotiated, that's not something that we can change. And so that's why, you know, when we talk about labor costs, it's, it's real costs and the district concurs this on all seven days.
Any other comments?
No, I just think it's a great plan, a great idea, and I think it'll be helpful to them as well as, I mean, just all around, it's the right thing to do.
Mr. Aho, please call a roll.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes. Without objection from colleagues, I will read J11 and 12 together. J11, resolve that Twinsburg Board of Education approves the contract with Tyco Simplex Grinell 17295 Foltz Industrial Parkway, Suite G, Strongsville, Ohio, 44149, in the amount of $17,260 for fire alarm maintenance and sprinkler inspections at Twinsburg High School, RB Chamberlain Middle School, George D. Dodge Intermediate, Samuel Bissel Elementary, and Wilcox Primary. This is a permanent improvement expenditure sent to the board under separate cover. J12, resolve that Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the bid proposal from Karen Asphalt Paving Incorporated, 7615 Bond Street, Solon, Ohio, 44139, for the South Drive, also known as Pride Parkway, repaving project at RB Chamberlain Middle School in the amount of Construction to commence on June 7, 2018 upon completion of signed contract. This is a general fund expenditure sent to the board under separate cover. Do I have a motion for items J11 and 12?
So move.
Mr. Felber, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis, one quick, actually two quick comments on this. Again, appreciate the work of Chad in working through these contracts and securing these and, and, you know, helping with the bid sheets and ensuring that, you know, these are done at a very good cost to the district. And also, as far as the, the dollars for J12, the repaving project, Mrs. Powers, do you want to touch base or would you like me to explain kind of the windfall that we were able to get from this?
Either way.
Go ahead. I'll defer you.
You want me to break the time?
So we have been very cognizant of some of the valuation information that comes out of the Summit County Fiscal Office. And working with legal counsel, we have been able to challenge some of the information that we've received. And through the challenge of the legal counsel, we have been able to collect $150-some thousand dollars that we otherwise would not have received. It's because we're paying attention to the books and we're paying attention to what's going on with property and the tax system and fiscal office in Summit County. And those are dollars that if it wasn't our due diligence, we would not have this pot of money to work on the driveway. This is the driveway that passes the bus parking lot. And for any of our families that are RBC parents especially, or this time of the year, parents who are driving up to the pool, you know, the potholes that are on that driveway is long overdue. And so it wasn't necessarily in our, in our PI budget to be able to fix that this year, but we recognize that it's becoming a safety issue. You know, people in their vehicles and our drivers park right there have to cross that parking lot, walking through asphalt that is not in a very good condition. So it was time to do it now. We had to push this project forward. And thankfully, because we're very diligent and paying attention to information out of the fiscal office, we were able to collect that money and it is, it is here for our use this summer. So again, you know, it's all about paying attention to our responsibilities and making sure we're diligent in all matters. And Chad's negotiating contracts, Marty's watching the dollars, and we have the assistance of legal counsel that pushes that forward through the process that they have to follow. And now we have the money to be able to, to complete a project this summer that otherwise would have not been able to be done. So it's, it's a, it's a work in progress and we all have to work together, but I'm, I'm glad that we have the funds to manage this project for this coming summer.
You know, definitely, that's a good thing. And kind of going back even to Marty, what you were saying in terms of, you know, your five-year contract, that $150,000 is not something that you're anticipating in a five-year contract. So a lot of the, you know, Mr. Felber said you get a lot of negativity from the community sometimes as to why we so off. Well, you know, if we weren't doing this and we weren't paying attention on this end, then we wouldn't have, you know, and this is not the first instance of where we have dollars available to do this. So, you know, that's kind of where, you know, you're forecasting what you know and what you, what you know that is there. And on top of, you know, the state changing their funding and how they're taking away things, you know, we're also able to try and get things like this, but you can't plan for this. So, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a big, you know, there's a lot of, lot of, lot of things, a lot of balls in the air. It's a big, big moving, you know, object as to what we're doing here. And it all kind of ties together and I appreciate, you know, the diligence of...
And I appreciate, you know, the diligence of, you know, the administrative team and our legal counsel to be able to, you know, take care of this for us and be able to do this. Because, you know, had this not happened, well, that's $150,000 that, you know, either has to come from another project and another project gets delayed, or it has to come from the general, you know, and take away from that balance and negative spend and deficit spend again. So, you know, congratulations again and thank you for everything you do. I think, you know, it's the little things like this that I don't think the community sees sometimes, and I think it's really important that we highlight this, you know, so that people understand, you know, every little bit that we do counts. Every $10,000, $20,000 saved here, you know, on a contract or, you know, the fact that, you know, the fact that, you know, our FMX contract has pretty much stayed the same dollar valuation for the past four years is unheard of in, you know, in most industries. That a service-type contract or a licensing-type contract is going to stay the same. So, you know, there's a lot of backend work that goes into what we do. And while it might not be million-dollar savings on one thing, everything adds up. And that goes to show why we're able to be in the position that we are in today financially, even though our revenues have been essentially flat for 10 years. So, you know, that's kudos to the three administrators up here and to your team and to all the effort that you guys do. So, thank you. Thanks. Any other comments on J11 and 12? Mr. Aho, please call a roll.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes. Item K, any Missalinas?
Board of Education, just to notice, on this agenda, you'll see that I've noted a special work session on the board, which is next week on June 13. Just to update the community what that's about, I've been working with Larry Finch of the city and the mutter of the city, Mayor Yates, and a committee talking about connecting communities and the grant that they're seeking. Basically what that's about is that all over town, there are different paths and walkways and jogging trails and lots of things. And they're not very connected. And I went for a walk with this group of individuals in the fall and I was surprised. I've been in the community since 1997, didn't realize how many great things that we have hidden around the community. And so the city's very smart in trying to figure out how to connect all these different paths and walkways, et cetera, for the good of the community. It adds just one more great thing about living in town. But it's time now to begin the conversation with the Board of Education because some of those connections, for example, the path that is behind Dodge and the one that Ms. Spring used for a lot of science projects, is a great resource, but it stands by itself. So how do you connect that with other places in town? And so on June 13, the Board of Education will be in a work session with city officials and an engineer to talk about some ideas through their grant funds to potentially connect some of these various paths and such to the benefit of the community. So, we will meet here at 7:30 on June 13. We'll be meeting in council chambers and participating in a meeting with those individuals, I noted.
Looking forward to that. And that was something, you know, I appreciate the city coming forward with that and, you know, being able to schedule that meeting. I'm looking forward to that. Any else, Missalinas?
Just a shout out to everybody that was involved in commencement and a fantastic commencement, very special for myself, but for the, you know, all the other families, a lot of work goes into getting everybody down the right aisle at the right time. The performances were amazing.
Amazing.
Had to get it back together, you know, before the kids started walking so we could stand up and shake hands without crying. But, you know, nice job and, you know, the special recognition to Mrs. Turing on her retirement, that was, you know, was also very special. Congratulations to everybody, because I know that's a big group that I would miss somebody if I named all 30 or 40 people that are involved in getting the students across the stage.
Just echo what you said. And just again, congratulations to track team. I was getting updates throughout the morning when I was working and like was missing some of them and getting some of them all at once. And just, I can imagine how exciting it was to actually be there and see all that happening. But I know we said our congratulations earlier, but it's just definitely worth recognizing the students and the coaches. Mr. Solera, one other thing that Mr. Felber just noticed. On the agenda, the notice for the next regular meeting of the board, it says June 28. Actual date is the 27, so it's a typo, just so the community knows that it's the normal Wednesday meeting. And it's held over at the high school because we're off schedule. And the meeting is the fourth Wednesday of June because that's the meeting at which Mr. Aho has a lot of financial reports that he has to ask for your approval.
All righty. Well, that, the board does have a need for an executive session, so I'll make a motion that the Board of Education enters into executive session at 8:18 to discuss employment and compensation of public employees as per Board of Education Policy 0166A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Davis was second. Discussion. The board actually does have need for two executive sessions tonight, so we will reconvene out of our first executive session and then enter into a second executive session. I don't anticipate any public action after either one of these executive sessions. Any other discussion? Mr. Aho, please call a roll.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Board is now in executive session.